Committee of the whole presentation from Public Works.
Greg's going to join me here for this discussion. It's something that we've been looking at for years and something Greg's had to deal with higher career. So at least in county government. We're talking about public works funding. So back in 2013, state legislatures, the state legislature offered up to the counties the ability to impose a local option sales tax and Goodhue County took advantage of that in 2017 implemented the half set sales tax and an excise tax of $20 per vehicle. Prior to that, what we're here to talk about today is the wheelage tax. Goodview County implemented that wheelage tax in 2014 at $10 per vehicle because that's what was allowed at the time. A few years after that, the legislature allowed counties to go up to $20 per vehicle. So it got up here. All right. So the county's authorized implement wheelage tax applied to eligible vehicles annually. Mentioned when that's up to $20 per vehicle. All wheelage tax revenue generated stays in the county where the vehicle is registered other than the state fees associated with collecting taxes. And then that money is paid to the county monthly. We track that through all of our records. Any implementation or change requires board authorization by an August 1 deadline every year. It's just kind of an ongoing ongoing deal. And that becomes active at the beginning of the year because it relates to your registration steps. Here's a map showing local optional taxes for transportation across the state of Minnesota. This map actually includes the local optional sales taxes as well as the wheelage tax and quarter cent tax. It's handled through a couple of counties, but for the most part, full half set implementation was made. The statistics I give here relate to the wheelage tax implementation. There's 33 counties that are imposing a $10 per vehicle rates for counties that implemented a $15 per vehicle rate, 17 at 20. And then there's 33 counties that do not implement any wheelage tax. So since we began collecting the wheelage tax in the years 2014 through 2022, the county has brought in 4 million, 6,000 and change. On an average per year basis, that's about $502,000 to $503,000. It fluctuates from year to year. We've seen it upwards of 525,000. So you know, dividing that by 10, you had roughly 50,000 vehicles that the wheelage tax affects. The wheelage tax is a user based tax. Money goes back into our system and it's used for highway purposes. You know, taking our figures at $10 per vehicle per year and applying, you know, a $15 wheelage tax or even a $20 kind of yields out these possible averages per year that we could see if there is a change made to our wheelage tax. So when there was a lot of discussion initially when the wheelage tax was implemented in Goodview County about how the dollars would be spent. The board at the time felt that it would be prudent because it was a tax collected by the users in Goodview County that the dollars we spent on projects that kind of would cover the entire county. So it was at that point in time, we were really short on some of our preservation work, mostly seal coat. And seal coating, seal coating is it's a preservation type of work that really adds longevity to your pavement. So by continually being able to fund seal coat projects, you know, we're able to lengthen how long our pavements are out there.
It's kind of like if you buy a new house, the first thing you want to do is paint it so the wood doesn't start to rot immediately. That's very similar to a seal coat. You go out there and put this new fresh pavement out there and day one, the sun is beating on it. Rain is soaking into it and the traffic is traveling. So it preserves the top of that etuminous so that the etuminous as a whole doesn't deteriorate at such a fast rate. You're protecting the investment in the extremely expensive cost of paving a road by simply. It's been, it's worth very well, very well.
So we've taken a pretty aggressive approach with our seal coats. That's in line with a lot of research that's been done. We're paving our roads and then within the first year or two, legs, two years, we're getting that first seal coat out and then we're evaluating it between seven and 10 years to come back and do another seal coat. Seal coat doesn't improve ride. It doesn't do anything other than helps reduce the amount of thermal cracking in the road with that initial seal coat. And then it preserves that surface like Greg was talking about. The sun is your worst enemy when it comes to pavements. Soon as you lay it down, it starts to oxidize and deteriorate. So this helps seal it up. So we also just kind of going off topic a little bit, but in line with preservation work, we have started utilizing micro-surfacing as a tool for preservation, which buys us some more gears on some of these pavements. We did one down from Bayside down to Welch there. And that project turned out real well. We got a lot of compliments on it. It darkens up the surface. That road is heavily shaded. So a little bit of sunlight that gets through, it helps burn off some of the ice and snow in the winter months, provides a lot of traction. I sat through a fatal review of a lot of accidents in Goodhue County and County Road 7 seems to be one of those roads that comes up frequently. It's a heavily traveled for sports cars and sport bikes and motorcycles and and those curves can be challenging for some of these micro-surface projects, the seal coat projects, they help restore some of the the friction factor that should be in your pavements. And so by being able to utilize these preservation projects, the county is getting a better network overall. If you look at where we're at today versus 2014, actually Greg found a great map the other day where we looked at the condition of our roads and I think it was 2015 that I was from. And it breaks it out as to which roads are good and excellent for them. And from then till now, it's just, it's a stark contrast. The county has put an unbelievable amount of money from our local optional sales tax into pavements. And we've made a lot of inroads now with pavements where after this year, we still have, there's always going to be paving needs and preservation needs and we're going to work through that. But we're getting to a point where our system is getting to be in such great shape that we can focus on different types of constructing, mainly grading. Grading takes a lot of time and effort, a lot of money. And it does nothing but improve the safety of our roads. You know, and builds up Goodview County for farm to market activity and other capital projects.
Yeah. I mean, by regrading your roads, that's where you really improve your safety. You get rid of those sharp curves, get rid of those narrow roads, get rid of those steep in slopes. So it shouldn't be a death sentence if you drive over that white line is what we're trying to get to. And that's, you only take care of that by regrading your roads. But you need to, sort of like Jess said, we're in a unique situation where most of our pavements are in good shape. But I would recommend that the commissioners continue to keep it in good shape so that you're not spending extra money on the tumors just to keep it the road there. Spend more, use, keep it in good shape, concentrate on grading and start making real improvements. And the beauty about regrading the road, it may be like that for the next 50 years, maybe the next 100 years if that cross section stays the same. So it's, that's where we get the real safety invested into our little system.
All right. So moving on, when you read the state statute in regard to the wheelage tax specifically and what those taxes can be used for, they state in there that the taxes collected can only be used for highway purposes. And then it's further defined in Article 14 of the Minnesota Constitution, which it's a pretty broad highway purposes. As we apply the tax so far, it's been to preservation work. So one little fact, and you don't see it used too often at all currently. We can, the counties can implement the wheelage tax in $1 increments up to a cap of $20 per year. But typically, you know, you're looking at a $5. There are exempt vehicles from motorcycles, trailers, semi-trailers, vehicles not subject to registration. So collector vehicles, tax exempt vehicles and staple vehicles. And I think that was a comprehensive list right out of the legislation. All right. So looking at wheelage tax and wondering about what it could do for us. I came up with some possible reasons to implement more of a wheelage tax than we currently do, especially with state age with everything having become so inflated. There are some options here that were considered if they so choose. So I'll list these out quick and then we'll go through them one at a time. So the first one, we could reduce, the board can reduce property taxes and offset those property taxes with this user based tax, wheelage tax to help pay general highway needs. The next one, we could increase preservation work. So we're, you know, right now, the majority of the wheelage tax, if not all of it on an annual basis, goes right to seal coat because we're having such large paving programs. The dollar value of the seal coat projects exceeds what we have available for wheelage. Money available. And then throwing in some of these other preservation options. We can get into that one. Third one, replace aged maintenance equipment on a more frequent basis. You know, specifically our tannling fleet or increase our maintenance mechanic budget to better care for older equipment. And the idea was to not replace equipment more frequently. And then the fifth one, offset capital equipment levy dollars with additional wheelage tax dollars. So some of these can kind of be combined together to. So diving into the first one, reduce property taxes to offset wheelage tax, helping general highway needs. So if the county board had to do this, it's a very general use funding. I really, I think the residents of Goodview County and it really appreciate what the board did back in the day by applying the wheelage tax dollars to something that really affects the entire county. And our seal coat projects have touched every corner, every district and will continue to into the future. So originally, obviously the wheelage tax, when it was implemented, was intended to go to something specific like that. And it was very wide reaching. All right. So increasing preservation work, as I've said, currently our wheelage tax dollars go to seal coat. If the wheelage tax was increased, we had more money available, we could apply those dollars further to seal coating, crack filling, micro-surfacing. And then there's several other preservation type of projects that we could do that we don't. Right now, there's more needs than money or time available, especially as it relates to crack filling. And we go out, seal coat a road, the first thing we do is our maintenance forces are out there in springtime and early summer, they're filling up the cracks before we come in with the seal coat. So that's kind of step one in the preservation work. If you don't get that accomplished, you're not, you're not getting your full bang for your buck there. So the problem is we don't have the staff time, equipment or availability to cover all of the crack filling needs throughout the county. So if money could be spent to contract with some of these outfits that these contractors that come in that could do that type of work and how we can have more preservation work done ahead of time.
It would still be seal coating, coating though, correct?
It could be used for any type of preservation shift. So if the wheelage tax increased the money that we had available, we could apply it to doing some additional like crack filling projects where we're consulting out and getting more done. And this is what we're doing with our facilities. They wouldn't negate what we're currently doing. We would, we would continue doing what we do with our forces, but this would just be an additions.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So like I mentioned earlier, our county pavement is actually in fantastic shape. And after this summer, I mean, we're, I think we're paving out just under 100,000 tons of the tumors. And I think that would have been a security for Goodview County for a single CG. So it doesn't come without a cost. And if you don't take care of that investment, yeah. Then we'll just be spending ones.
Thanks.
Ten planners.
Yes.
I've been getting some questions regarding new pavement. We've got, you know, several gravel county roads. Is that at this point out of the question? Is that something we would look at? Traffic volumes?
So Greg can probably speak to the transportation, the current transportation plan and what that kind of.
Yeah. At this point, we haven't really delved into converting gravel roads into paved roads. The vast majority of them, the first thing you have to do is regrade that road. As many of those gravel roads have been altered for well over 100 years. County Road 23 is probably the best example of what we've done with the gravel road. And before we start getting to the point of paving all of those, it might make more sense to go through our gravel road system and do the same thing that we did in County Road 23 where you go up and you clean all the ditches out of it, you narrow it back up. And if we go to the point on 23, we actually put down some unstableization underneath 23, which is drastically changed the condition of that road in the springtime. Because the base town is stronger than it is with just gravel. It doesn't have a lot of strength in it. So if you want to do something with the gravel system, you could take one or two and try to pave it, but it might make more sense. We want to get into some of the grouts. Let's try to improve the grouts that we have and try to bring them all up to a better state.
So if you would be looking at like two minutes in the future, that 23 technically would be ready to put the surface on? Or is that going to have to be regraded again? Because you built it up.
We didn't really.
You have to test it, I suppose.
I thought the only thing you would do there at this point is maybe some ditching, but it's so flat there already. The last thing we want to do is cut into that stabilized base because you can't get that back. And you've now changed the condition in that road. So you're going to have a bump there every time if we cut it. So we'd like to avoid that.
Yeah. But the other issue is we didn't, we didn't design that for the width of being a paved road. If you put a paved road, you need at least 24 feet of just pavement. And then you want, depending on the volume of the traffic on it, you know, three to four feet of then shoulder outside of that. And then you want to put on safer four to one in slopes on it. On 23, it was more a matter of getting it back into the standard condition for a paved road. But we narrowed it up. I don't think we got specifically to get to a four to one. But we actually narrowed it up because in most gravel roads, the last thing you want is to have them too wide because they just take so much more maintenance. If you want to actually put pavement on the top of it, you've got to regrade it to a width that's greater than what we did until. But that would be one of those decisions if the board says, say, we want to start converting paved gravel roads that are paved, then the first thing we're going to have to do is regrade them to get to it.
And not all, but most of our gravel road system is county road. So the dollars that would be utilized would need to be local dollars. They wouldn't be able to tap into our state or federal money. So one thing to note, our, the current transportation plan that we're working under identified that Goodview County was not pursuing paving any more additional gravel roads. And the board at that time agreed to that. A lot of that had to do with funding available and our system was in poor shape. It was difficult to maintain. I'm thinking into the future and adding more of the tumors out there is going to be a challenge. Everything keeps going up, price of oil and everything else. And as the nation gravitates towards more renewables and electric vehicles and moving away from petroleum products, I think the cost of asphalt etuminous is just going to increase and labor markets being where they are is making it more difficult for the contractors to get people in to do this work. It's just so their timeframes become exacerbated and they're having to fit in one of the projects knowing that there's potential with the EDP, et cetera, et cetera. Kind of off topic here, but more of a tumors. Obviously a board decision, big financial decision. And you know, when we look at our gravel road system, we really need to be cognizant of what's happening out there? How much traffic are we looking at? Does it make sense to pave? You know, conversely, you take a look at Wisconsin, all of their roads are paved for the most part. I bet 99% of their township roads are paved.
I found the gravel ones though.
Yeah.
But what I was told over in Wisconsin, friends that live over there is their county actually owns the the blacktop machines and then the, or the county does, and then the townships just, they can use them. And so they're not paying contractors to do it.
Right. So you take a look at like Chippewa County, Wisconsin. I think that's where Lightning Kupel says that. They manage all the roads in the county and they have their own paving outfit. Their crew goes out and does paving. I can't say it's comparable to hiring contractors that work six days a week, 14 hour days, right? Not accomplishing that much there. The pavements are also not gash for bust against where they're looking at. We've built a very large town network and that's kind of what Greg was hoping to cure with 23. We were able to, through an engineering process, come up with a way to provide additional strength in a gravel road that we otherwise can than if it was between us or company. But it's still a gravel road. It just has strength characteristics, not characteristic of the normal gravel.
So are we so are we ready at soon to go back and do another road plan, a long range road plan?
Transportation plan?
Yeah.
Transportation plan. Yeah. Rex said we were hoping to get started about a year ago, but we just had too many other things thrown at us that you're going to go. But you're.
I think, I think that's where we'll identify as as Todd knows, there will be places along 52 where we need to put in some back end stuff if we're going to disconnect more roads around Pine Island and maybe by Mini O1 that will, that you would want to be paved at that point. But I mean, that's, that's where the transportation plan and thinking about the future, making sure if we're going to do something, it's the right road to do, not just a road.
Yeah. And that's, that's where the county board comes up with, you know, the major decisions on, like, like what Jess said, it was back probably 20 some years ago, he said, that's it. We're not going to, we're not going to pay any more of the gravel roads. And that was a decision that was made. Can't remember if it was in through transportation plans that, but that's where you go out and you talk to the public. And so what would you rather see? Would you rather see us maintain the same system that we have and take good care of it? Would you like to see some expansion type projects along with 52 or other changes where things have changed and come on board? Do you want to take the gravel road system and try to do the Wisconsin model and get everything paved? And then once, and that transportation study can go through with some analysis to try to figure out what would it cost to take all of our gravel roads and put them into a condition that we could pave? And you can take a look at what that cost is over the next 25 years versus the option. And by doing that, unless you have more funding, the condition of your pave system is most likely going to drop. So would you rather, you knew some of the condition of your pave system to bring all more paving on? Or would you rather keep what we've got really good and maybe make an improvement due to the rest of the gravel system that we did in 20? That it's still a gravel road, but it's a good gravel road and they can drive to get to their turkey barns or their hog barns. What was that? And those are the decisions that a transportation plan comes up with.
And that would also include looking for a CASA. And if the state would come in and help or they're all done.
No, your odds of getting anything added onto CASA is tough. It's tough to do.
The only way, if they're turning back a road to you, you might be able to use some leverage to get them to turn it back as a CASA road and not a county road.
Yeah. That, that process of adding county stated highways, full animal and self.
That takes legislation to change.
I think in our, you know, in our district here, 180th is gotten so much traffic since 52 is going to be cut off that that might be in the future. That'd be in transportation. We're not going to get into that.
Yeah.
All right. Unless there's other questions related to that, we'll move on to item number three. And that's talking about replacing aged maintenance equipment on a more frequent basis. But the best option that I can come up with that this would apply to for Public Works relates to our tannin subtrucks. And you know, when I sat down to write this report, I thought a lot about this last winter and obviously we all know that it was a doozy and we'll be bringing a report here hopefully at the next meeting with a bunch of statistics from that to show to the board. But on a, on a average basis, every time we had a storm, we had one to three plow trucks down. And I can't remember a year where I heard more from the public about how our level of service dropped. Well, it does relate back to the trucks and the equipment that we have. It doesn't work. It doesn't work if it's not on the road, which lengthens all the other routes because people have to pick up those additional miles. So when I looked at our fleet, we have 14 trucks and we have a 14 year replacement rate. So you get one new on every 14. I mean, for the top three. So I broke down, took all the trucks, broke down the annual maintenance costs for trucks that were anywhere between one and seven years old. So you end up with an average cost of just over $78 per unit per year. Now that's, that's an average. Keep that in mind. And then for trucks that were in that eight to 14 year old range, we're paying off on average 15, just over 15 and a half thousand dollars per unit per year. Now, bear this in mind, when I, that's an average. If you look at our oldest trucks, I had, I had one truck in particular. But the other one wasn't too far behind it. Where the last three years of its life, we were averaging over $30,000 for that unit each year. The unbelievable, unbelievable amount of mechanic work and maintenance needed on that unit to keep it operational. So as these trucks age, you know, they just require a whole lot of more care. And I noticed through the data, when we're hitting anywhere between that six, seven, eight year range, there was a significant jump in, in the cost. And that $15,000 per unit per year is pretty, pretty representative of that data that I got. So I also wanted to take a look at trade values and how that would relate, you know, we're trading some trucks off this year. We're, we're netting, you know, about 35,000 per unit at the end of life. Where, you know, at half its life, we'd be looking at about 125,000. You know, that's a significant difference. So if, if, if we take a look at, take a look at our tannin fleet and we're trading at a more frequent. And we're trading at a, a more frequent basis. You know, obviously our winter service is gonna increase because we don't have trucks now. The emissions that have been added to these vehicles, uh there's a lot more mechanical, electronic components. Wiring harnesses, our trucks are subjected to some of the worst conditions possible. It's not, not um standard for, for most tandem trucks we put through, well, both through. Uh but that's to provide service to the residents and, and those traveling, figuring it down. So uh increasing that uh replacement rate is gonna increase our service. And after this last year, our, our service, it was, it wasn't horrible, but it did, it did drop.
Just how, how many um mechanics do you have that work on this?
We have one and fourteen tandem trucks. We have an exceptionally large fleet. We have twenty. Uh it's twenty light vehicles and, you know, ten light vehicles and ten heavy vehicles. So those are uh like the dump box trucks and the one-ton trucks and the three-quarter ton trucks. We have a half-ton fleet um mainly for our engineering staff and a couple for the maintenance staff, but. Um that's just vehicles and you gotta talk about all the other heavy equipment that we have, uh small equipment that we have. Uh it's, it's not enough for one mechanic. It's too much for one mechanic to handle by far. We routinely have to bring in maintenance staff from the road. To get equipment ready to be able to go do a project and which makes away from our maintenance crew and. Uh it's just kind of a snowball at that. So as a whole, um. We definitely have mechanic needs, so.
Thank you.
Just what's the cost of the new truck?
Well, that's. It's subjective. I mean, that's a subjective question depending on what you're gonna now install on what kind of option. But generally speaking, you're probably in that three hundred to three hundred.
There's a couple of years ago is around two forty, two fifty. And that's with everything else, just in the last couple of years, it's jumped significantly.
Right. So with any private industry uh being capitalism being what it is, uh supply and demand. You know, there's a need, there's, there's a lot of demand from a lot of public agencies. We need these trucks to do what we do to provide service. We're not the only ones. The contractors also need trucks and uh, and this, that, and that's why we come to the board and ask to order these trucks so far in advance. Uh just makes that long, if you know. All right. So here's a picture of one of the oldest trucks in our fleets. Uh. I can't say that the rims um. Looked that great. Uh the guy's trying to do what they can um with that truck. It is rusting very bad. Here's a picture of a much newer truck. I think that's a twenty, twenty. Different options we were bringing us on that, so we don't have rusting issues, problems with our tires as much as we do.
So yes, I did see the picture of the rust and I certainly do know that. Salt causes corrosion on our cars and trucks or whatever if we don't take care of them. Do we wash our trucks?
When we have availability, um problem is we get into these snow events, especially this last winter and uh believing December. We ran nineteen days straight. These guys are out the road, you know, they, they come into the shop to hop in their truck, they leave. And when they're done with their shift, they're getting ready and getting home, getting some rest, they can get back. They're not, they don't have the availability to, to wash the trucks. When they need to. Now, when there's a break, then they start washing, but you know how? How salt can deteriorate something very, very.
Right, very, very quickly. That's why I was, yeah, I was just kind of wondering whether or not.
So we utilize brine, not just sand salts or straight salt. We also use brine, so liquid application just. You know, with a high salinity rate, um that, that has, that has a much more fast acting. Uh approach to rust in our, in our vehicles. I, I had, there is a couple more pictures coming up here.
Go ahead.
Oh, one of the problems we have, especially at the framing on these trucks is that it's that pack rust starts to develop. We can't mitigate that. Once it starts, you'd have to tear the truck down and, and start to rebuild some of those components. That gets exceptionally expensive. Um and, and that's probably the biggest problem that we're seeing with these trucks, other than the emissions and electronics. All right. So we talked about a little bit increasing our maintenance uh mechanic budget, better care for older equipment. So this is something that we look at uh conversely to just replacing equipment on a more frequent basis. You could consider uh substantially increasing the amount of. Service that we're doing on these trucks, so they're in better repair, taking them in at your second aid to sandblasting, repainting them. Trying to mitigate some of that pack rust, you know, before it becomes a problem. Um taking care of some of those issues uh is definitely make, we look a little bit better. The cost of doing it, it's gonna be substantial. You may, I haven't said it at all, you may be able to. Get a little bit more return on that dollar when it comes time to trade the vehicles. But generally speaking, I, I don't think you're gonna gain more than it's gonna cost to do the maintenance. So. Um. Obviously, older equipment has more issues. Trade values are always affected by age division. Put them through the worst possible conditions and it's not just winter. You know, we're, we're utilizing our trucks in the summer, we're hauling aggregates or uh placing our roads. Children material for our roads, we're ditching roads for dirt, play, uh brush. Uh the guys are using these trucks year round, so it's not, it's not just a winter maintenance thing. And I don't have the trucks used in the summer. It impacts what we're getting done for maintenance. So just the same as it does in winter, it just doesn't heavily affect the users quite as much. So um let's see. Obviously, I mentioned this earlier too. It's more than just our plow trucks. It's stokers, excavators, tractor back, no skid loaders, mini excavator, trailers. Uh it impacts all of our equipment, so. The, the problem with uh maintenance and, and, and having mechanics available is that we don't have a mechanic available to. Do all of the stuff. We have very talented people at public works, but they don't, they don't have the time available to handle. Falling work. So we would obviously have to look at, you know, staffing versus outsourcing uh. The level of service that the board would be comfortable with. So here's a, here's a picture uh of bottom side and it, it's tough to see um. Just to, I can't get too good very well, but the, the framing between the, the uh. Truck um box and, and the lift system for the box is where the pack rust starts to begin. And I don't remember if you were around um. But years ago, the county had a truck whose box fell off when you put it up while it was plowed. Because the pack rust developed and. Box fell and it just fell off. Well, that's a huge liability for anyone following.
And then their trucks are next, that's the same too.
So these are pictures from the same two trucks I showed earlier. This is a much newer truck. Uh obviously that needs, it's a little beam underneath, it's, it's painted, it's fully painted. There's obviously red overspray from painting the truck. Um but you know, in, in uh the, the age of this truck, you know. Rust, it's, it's there, it's starting, uh but it's minor. There's no pack rust, there's no issues. Uh you know, then increasing our level of maintenance and mechanic work. Uh at year seven, eight, going through sandblasting the truck. Trying to bring it back to this type of a condition, maybe something the board wants to see. Our last possible reason to implement your fees to offset gotten the levy dollars with additional mileage tax dollars. As mentioned earlier, we're averaging about five hundred and two, five hundred and three thousand dollars per year with mileage tax. Public Works, uh I forgot one word in here, wanna make it very clear. Public Works capital budget for equipment, it's. For equipments specifically, it's around a million dollars and it's not our full capital budget. There are other needs that, because we're here to talk about equipment. Um that's with that bigger relates, this equipment and that's an average. It's really rough average that I look at really. That's where we're at. And that's for twenty-four to twenty. Actually, what did it put me? Mainly with me. So if the board was to offset these capital uh equipment levy dollars, it'd be a one-time levy reduction um. Which is something to keep in mind. So moving on, things to consider, um you know, the board's looking at possibly doing something with wheelage tax. Trying to keep in mind the wheelage, the wheelage tax, uh more, more people are paying for that. There's more. You, you're covering a bigger network of people than just property hackers, you know, um. There's fifty thousand vehicles in the county that this is being applied to university and they're not all property owners, so. And so it's a way to capture dollars that goes to the system that these people are using, so it makes a lot of sense in my mind. Uh using wheelage tax revenues to replace tandems on a seven-year cycle. We leave money to offset a part of the capital equipment levy, so now even though the trucks cost a lot of money upfront. And if we're selling them earlier, you're getting more returns uh for that trade. And then the amount of wheelage tax dollars collected at a full twenty-dollar implementation would give us about five hundred thousand dollars to work with, so. Uh you start doing the math, there's still money left over on the back end that you could apply to help reduce the levy. And put that towards capital equipment purchases, so. Regardless, full wheelage tax implementation can bring some property tax relief through that mechanism. So discussion, um the board would need to decide if they were interested in doing something with wheelage tax by August first. Uh if you aren't interested in moving forward, um there's not many meetings since we know. One more meeting in June, uh one in July, and then for August. So we have to notify the state. We have the board was interested in doing. You could, you could uh choose to do something sooner rather than later. And then we could have further discussion about all the board would like to implement those dollars, use them as a whole. So wrapping up, you know, the question is to implement or not to. What?
But I think you're saying, if we were, we could say we were interested in implementing but not decide yet and where that money was.
The state doesn't require us to stay where those dollars are, just that we spend them on.
I understand that.
Yep. So conversely, the local optional sales grant requires a hearing, we have to say. These are the, this is the list of properties that we're gonna spend.
I think so. It's more general.
So if we don't do anything to the ten redumis, or we have to actually say we want to do the ten?
No, it, it was passed once and that stays on, the board would take action to actually pull it on. But if you wanna make any kind of an increase to fifteen or to twenty, that's where you need to make a decision. Pretty soon.
Yeah. I, I'm interested in it, but it's partly because right now Goodview County gets more of its tax dollars through the levy than a lot of counties do. And it seems like the user tax and then deciding not necessarily spend five hundred thousand more, but to, to decide that, that makes some sense to me.
Babishad Dodge Rice are all at twenty dollars. I mean, surrounding counties are.
Yeah.
It all, it all depends on, on individual needs. Fillmore and Freeborn are twenty dollars. I mean, there's several that use it. In that way.
It was tough for the, for the state to provide any type of additional financial relief to the counties back then. Uh gas taxes increased for how long? They gave us this opportunity to do something ourselves. Uh it would be nice to take advantage of the ability to do that, so.
And it would, it would be nice if we could do something about the condition of it. It, it gets, it gets really scary to get into the latter part of the winter. And these trucks have been pushed and pushed and that's when everyone starts breaking down and that's when you get your spring snow torn. You know? People get really, really mad that truck hasn't shown by their place and it's six hours later than it normally is.
We'd actually have to move to put it on an agenda. I mean, or we could recommend to put it on an agenda. And then do we have to have a public hearing? You don't have to have a public hearing to add, to change it.
Should pass a resolution, should pass that on to the state, work with uh our finance office, take care of that.
You could decide exactly uh out of those five options how you wanna use it, but you don't have to.
Like, I don't think you wanna handicap yourself as to how you can use it.
Budgeting discussion, we could decide how we wanted to use that.
I know I've asked this before, but I can't always keep all the numbers in my head, but Goodhue County has a lot more roads than others. It's over four hundred.
More bridges.
Bridges, okay. Maybe that's what I'm thinking about.
We're third, third in the state in bridges.
All right. About average.
Yeah, back comparable range to be versus here.
All right.
But the, you know, one of the complicating things with our roads, I mean, you compare us to a Dodge or a Rice. I mean, how many roads do they have where you have to back up backwards in a nice storm? Right. Uh and start with salt and sand down so that you can take care of that road.
In our county, there's none, they're offline.
There's not a bluff.
You just have to worry about getting blown off the road.
Right.
Um. Yeah. Um, I'd be interested in putting it on an agenda.
I would.
Sooner or later. Well, I won't be here at the next one, but that matters, but.
Yep.
In, in July. Get it on in July.
When is there a meeting in July? You will be at?
Well, be it all, near in July.
There's, isn't there one you're missing because of the trip?
No, it's in the next one in June. I'll be gone the next one in June.
All right.
Okay.
Then, yeah, I mean, I would also support having it put on the agenda for July. Todd?
Yep.
Is there interest or correction in any one of the? Options, or do you mind just?
I would, if, if it was me, I, I'd do what the other counties are doing and go to the twenty. There's very few that have gone to the fifteen. It's mostly either ten or twenty.
Yep.
I would go to the twenty, shift the dollars. Um I think you could do a mix of taking some out of capital and some into road. You could, I think that's a balancing act to figure out what's the best way to, to approach that.
Yeah, you can do that through the budgeting process.
Yeah, that's part of budgeting.
Right. I would, if we did it, I would do it open-ended and let us, let us work with the ambles to make it work on, on that end.
And may apply to uh earlier replacement schedule on equipment offsets.
Well, it was a year. It was interesting, you know, the conversation about washing a truck. They said the former place I worked finally built a shop heated where they could put their truck. And they washed it every time they brought it in off the road in the winter. It took exactly two years for the whole flatbed on that truck to real stop.
Oh.
Yeah. So washing it off isn't the answer all the time? Because now you're getting everything completely wet and you never get all the salt off. And you're in a heated building and it accelerates the rusting. If you actually parked it in a cold storage. Which we can't do because they gotta be able to go out the door and all the hydraulics need to be worn to run.
Yeah.
Um. If you parked in a cold storage, it would less less. Even if it didn't wash it, it would less less. But we can't do that because we need them, there's a lot of hydraulics that run a lot of equipment on those trucks and it has to be. Ready to go when you start the truck. It can't wait a half an hour for the hydraulics to warm up. Just doesn't work.
Brian, you have something? Do we need him to come up to the microphone?
He should be.
Will you pop the microphone?
Take those engineers out of there.
Yeah.
Just for one point for clarification, uh my staff has been working with uh the department of revenue. And they are changing the way that we get paid through the department of revenue, so the department of revenue collects the local optional sales tax. And the money, and then they cut us a check. Now, they end up actually cutting us two checks. One is for the majority of the amount, the other is for a kind of a reconciliation. They take out their admin fee and the second one and then give us the residual. Uh so they wanna change up that process and so I believe it was supposed to be done here by the end of June, which means that we were gonna bring their proposed resolution. To the board for approval at the next meeting. Uh if that is still the case, then we can probably reach out to the department of revenue. Maybe we can ask for an extension on that, so we can do it on the eighteenth or whatever that uh meeting date is and if we can combine everything together. So, but if we can't, you might see a resolution just to approve their administrative changes. And then we'll bring back the changes that you were discussing here today.
So don't, don't, you know, we're not trying to do that, but.
Big brother's watching over us.
Yes, yes, they're telling us if we wanted money, this is what you're gonna have to approve, so that might be, uh, just to clarify now.
However, it works.
Okay.
I think, I think I I'm hearing consensus, if we want to at least put it on in a general fact.
Yes, and we're.
And I don't think we're ready to decide between the options of where it will go, we wanna keep that.
So you're talking about the options to spend it, so are we, do we appear to have a direction for them on twenty dollars as opposed to? Alright.
Me, the twenty dollars makes sense.
Todd, what about you?
I don't like any more taxes, but when you look at it, it's gonna hopefully reduce the levy, can we somehow put on that said. This, we are not raising this levy disappoints because we did this.
Yeah.
For user, I might, yeah, I would be, I'm okay with it.
That's personally why I'd like to wait to decide, I think we have to see all the budget requests and be able to make a decision on how it's been.
I feel like it's, it's for, I, the uh, the usage tax, I mean, yeah, it's a tax, but it's. For everyone who uses the roads, alright.
Um, they hate to say this, but I know we're talking July, but their budget would be a hell of a lot easier if we decided in four July. They're gonna have to prepare it a couple different ways and it's.
The twenty dollars?
Where it goes within the budget.
I see, but it's hard to do that.
I I know, this is insane, their their budget's tough, the way it is.
However, you won't be here for the next meeting in June.
Just throw that out, I know I didn't help anything by saying.
No, I, there's a possibility I could be online, I don't, I don't know that for sure.
You are, yeah, vacation, this.
It's only Ireland.
Well, yeah. Um. I'll see, I I can't promise you.
No, I'm, I understand.
They might not have internet, they might have electricity, you never know.
Alright.
I think, what I hear is going forward, one way or another. It has to be in June, it has to be in June, figure it out, we'll work through it.
Would that make a huge, huge difference for you if?
Depends on where it would be applied to.
I'm sorry?
That's the part of the budget that's tough is we, without knowing where it gets applied to, uh, their budget, that's where I'm saying their budget's a lot tougher.
I get you.
Where are you thinking you'd like to see?
Well. Yeah. The question to answer, um. Personally, I would apply it to place me for on a more reaching basis and then offset. Some of the levy, if it could be any dollars on the banking basis, uh, so you are seeing. You're not seeing tax relief, it's not, it's the same number of dollars, it's just you're shifting it from, uh, copy act years. Uh, user base of some, I think, I think generally speaking in the board, um, is it's looking at. What potentially could be the levy increase, but see, there's intention to burn it, it's just not, maybe.
I think several of us like, like to see that.
But it could solve some of our problems, but to, especially if there can be, um. We got to a fourteen year replacement cycle because, not necessarily because that made sense, other than we have fourteen trucks. So it's just replace one every, you go talk to any other county in the state, they're all gonna have a different method of.
Even if we drop it down to ten. You know.
But then you're still gonna have years where you're gonna have.
Yeah, two, one year, one year.
And then I don't know how much, uh, service that's being increased by. Seeing these big jumps and and needs for these trials, once you get that six, seven, eight year mark, so. I I read through a big report that was done, uh, replacing heavy equipment, um, that the research board did and we saw that, and. They compared, they compared, uh. Oh, which gives Washington County. City of the Dyna, we give it to China, and then Dodge County did, throw down. They don't have capital needs to just replace equipment when it needs to be replaced. Where bigger entities have a capability to take a, take, take a actual book, hard book at when stuff should be replaced, you're maximizing. Life of that, while being able to provide service, which is what we're doing.
And and this one time ship isn't gonna allow you to automatically go to seven years, it will take years to get to seven years. You'll be replacing trucks for a while.
But it's a, it's a long.
A longer process, yeah.
I I think we should try to concentrate on having more help in the shop. Uh, we def, we used to have two mechanics, three mechanics, yeah, and then it's been cut down through the last twenty years. To basically one mechanic, and then we are stealing other people off the road crew to come in. Because the shop is full and these trucks can't get out of there, going back to getting at least a second mechanic. I think we go a long way into keeping our equipment in much better shape than it is, and giving us the the ability to react. When you're in the middle of a really bad snowstorm, that you don't have to pull a guy off a route to come in to get the trucks running.
That might be the most cost effective.
Yeah, exactly, and that gets to be a huge issue when when running a really emergency port.
How many trucks and cars do you have totaled that your one mechanic has to?
Well, we have fourteen tandems, we have twenty checkups, trucks, um. Excavator, two dollarsers, water truck, um, we'll have tanker, a low boy, two side dumps. Um, multiple skid loaders.
Mechanic that's qualified to actually work on all of those?
DOT certified, so he, yeah, he is very.
But he's the only one? Okay.
There are certain things that we don't have him do, transmission were to go out, we're not gonna, we're not gonna saddle him, try to replace something like that. We take way too much of his time and especially if you have expertise coming.
Right.
Send it to show.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I do think from the budget standpoint, if if we just had consensus that if the board does adopt twenty dollars. That it would go to capital the first year, I think that would help when when we're putting the budget together, and then instead we don't have to worry about the timing. July's fine.
Or as Todd suggested, perhaps we could put some of it towards the levy and some of it towards capital, which I think we also.
But doesn't matter, it doesn't matter which, what you put it for, if you, if you, if you take five hundred thousand from. Uh, a user tax, that's five hundred thousand less you're gonna add to the levy.
Well, presumably unless you decide to buy something extra with five hundred thousand, then it's.
That's not what they're proposing at all.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, but you're buying capital that you're reducing the capital plan, which is part of the levy too, so it doesn't matter.
For the most part, we'll replace them.
Yeah, it's a.
It'd reduce the capital levy, it's at the end of the day, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, you could, you could say we're gonna put it towards the road and reduce the levy on the road.
Sure.
You can say, do it towards capital, you're gonna reduce the levy on capital, which.
So if we said we were putting it towards capital, that wouldn't be saying we're adding five hundred thousand to the capital budget, we might be.
No, you're replacing, you're replacing levy dollars with wheelage dollars.
If that's what we decided, I understand, that makes some sense.
So, that I believe is what this board would like to see, so when you present it, that's.
You don't have to do three budgets, Tom. Just one good one.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.